Let's begin with prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather here tonight with our hearts filled with gratitude. We thank you for your grace and your mercy and the love that you bestowed on us so generously. Your guidance and love and wisdom has carried us through to this moment, and we ask and believe and trust that you will carry us through the meeting tonight. We thank you that we are made in your image, and we ask for a supernatural download of heavenly wisdom above all, that your will prevails. We thank you for the mandate that you've given each one of us to be good stewards of what you've put in our hands to manage, and remind us, Lord, to love our neighbors even as we love ourselves. I thank you, Lord, for your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members. I give thanks that they have answered the call to service on behalf of our city. We come to this meeting tonight with its complexities carrying joy, hope, and anticipated goodwill toward one another. We're asking, Lord, that you hold us together in one mind, in one accord, in unity for the betterment of our city. We trust and honor you, and we trust and honor one another. May respect in matters of government and dealing with one another be the banner over our city. We ask this all in the mighty name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
First time it's Chief Reyna.
....................................
Sounds pretty cool with a lot of people in here. Have a roll call, please? Here, we have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve agenda.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will second it with the addition for request for you to please allow the citizens of our community to speak to items number nine, A and 10.
I'm sorry, what was the numbers?
Nine, A, and 10A.
Nine, A, and 10A. I'm not in charge of volume. Nine, A, and 10A, are those already public hearings?
If you've considered that, yes.
Okay. Sure, absolutely. Yep, I'll agree to that. And you second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passed. All right, move on to presentations. Certificate of recognition. You want me to go mobile for this? Yes, all right. You guys hear me? Ooh, there we go. Okay. Certificate of recognition. The finance department, come on up. See, I know there's more. All right. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Los Spanos and for receiving for the ninth consecutive year, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2122. Congratulations. Sure enough, sure enough. Thank you. All right, moving on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest. Those within the jurisdiction of the city council includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council information table in the back. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward, just remind yourselves to turn off our silent your phones. We do have one scheduled first, and that is with the VFW and American Legion.
Okay. Tonight, we have the presentations to present back the flags from our veterans parade. Hopefully, all of you were able to attend our veterans parade on the fourth of November, and we had the most patriotic entry contest for our schools. We have it in three divisions, the elementary school, the junior high school, and the high school. And for the elementary school, I'm going to let Patricia tell you who won the award.
Hello. So for the elementary, it was Mercy Springs Elementary School was the winner, and this was actually their second year in a row that they won. So congratulations. Their entry was... Come on up. It was impressive to see not only their float, but the amount of school participation, and that's one of the things that the judges do look at as well, is just to get as many kids involved and parents involved to get up on a Saturday morning to participate is pretty amazing.
Bring it over that way.
It gives us great pleasure when we watch this parade as it goes through with all these young people participating and understanding the meaning of patriotism and doing the great job that they do. Next, we have the junior high school.
So the winner of the most patriotic junior high was Los Spanos Junior High. Again, this was actually their second year in a row as well, so come on down. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to see their float, but it was absolutely jaw-dropping amazing, and we just are really impressed with the turnout that they presented to us.
And the last group is the high school, and again, the high school puts forth a great deal of effort. We had both high schools participating, and Patricia will again tell you who the winner is.
And for a second year in a row, again, we had the Pacheco High School was the winner for the high school level, and, you know, congratulations to Pacheco High School.
In recognition, the VFW and the American Legion do an amazing job to put on this parade every year, and we look forward to it. So because of that, I want to present some recognition, recognizing the efforts of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2487, who organize and deliver to our citizens a parade expressing our appreciation for all veterans and their sacrifices, as well as the American Legion Post 166. So I want to present these to you and say thank you.
You know, we'd really like to thank the city and the council for supporting our parade every year. Without them, we'd never get it put together. We've had great support, and it's great to work with the City of Los Spanos.
So now, I guess, we'll switch to the regular public forum.
Hi. My name is Kathy Ballard. I have a question really quick. If you're opening it up for a public forum for item nine, eight, and 10, does that mean I get five minutes additional at nine, eight, and 10?
You can speak either now on the item or when the item comes up.
Okay, because I'd rather speak it when the item comes up, so... Because it's hard to condense everything in one five-minute thing. I wanted to bring up on your consent agenda, item 7B. I wanted to know what the purpose is of hiring Imagine Way More. From my understanding, he's already been working for you for a while, because we're attracting... It's the same thing I said when you wanted to put up the million-dollar gateway to downtown Los Spanos, when we didn't have anything to attract them to at the time. I know we're on the process of working on that and improving the downtown, but it just seemed like putting the cart before the horse to attract them to something that isn't up to par. This company has only been a company since August. I don't know if they have a business license, I wasn't checking, but they said that there was four people interested, and I only saw one bid. I did not see a copy of the other three bids in the agenda packet. Normally, that's posted with it so that we can review them. There's nothing there. It just has his, you know, three lines saying what he does. I want you to think about using the students and the kids you have, the public you have here in the City of Los Spanos. We have a journalism class, we have social media classes, we have all of this that's available to us to provide, I'm assuming what you're looking for is to promote the city. And, Mr. Begonia, since you're in education, should have been the first thing that you would be on in regards to the students out there that are learning a trade and could use the experience. I think that's all I have on this one. I don't understand $7,500 a month. We seem to be spending a lot. I know some of it is from ARPA funds, that's what's paying for trimming all our trees, painting our buildings, all this other stuff. That's a one-time pocket of money. $7,500 a month is something that would have to be in your general fund all the time. You can't keep drawing from the ARPA. Once that's gone, it's gone. That's why it's usually done for a one-time shot. Thank you for your attention to the matter.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and I am Blanche, and I live in the downtown area, District Four. I'm representing myself, and I have no motive in what I'm going to be saying. I'd like to first congratulate the council and the mayor for... They have an anniversary coming up of being elected. Deborah, I think you have about 30 years of commission and being elected, and I applaud you for that. I also believe that individuals that have sat on commissions and then, of course, gained their election in their seats have probably received a booklet from our city manager about conduct, the city structure, and the way that it works, and not only what that happens during commission stage, but also, I believe, during someone's elected council seat. Additionally, we, the people, the city, I call... When I say the city, I really mean like people, all of us, you, all of us, have sent commissioners and elected officials to different types of training classes. These training classes are different ideas about the city. They're additionally ideas about conduct and also about how to treat employees, that's a big one with League of Cities. I know that problems arise and everybody gets emotional and upset at times, but it's very important that we are careful with the way that we... That the city employees get treated. Calling them out for certain personal things is unbecoming a council member. I hope that we could be a kinder and gentler group. Additionally, when our esteemed city manager gives us advice, it's important that we listen because his advice saves the city from a lot of grief, and he is not in the position of getting pushback, he's not in the position of debate, he's just giving the best advice for us. So I ask that you listen to him. For our city currently, we've been... There's been a lot of bad talk about our city, and some of us that walk through town have to explain to people what's going on sometimes. I don't think for the economic development of our city that there should be so much fussing and fighting. I think that, you know, for business owners and homeowners and everybody, there should not be a negative light. We have city employees that go to these conferences to sell our city, and they're trying to do their best, and it's important that we also help them by painting Los Spanos, and with reality, of course, but that we also paint it in the best way and look at the best people. You know, the city started...
Thirty-six.
Was moved here. The city was moved here, and there are people in the past that have worked so hard for our city, and they've passed the torch to us. We'll eventually pass the torch to the future, but it's very important that we hold it in a very delicate manner what we say. So with that being said, I just believe that we could be kinder to other human beings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lanas and Council. Chris Sontzantos here again, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. First off, just wanted to express gratitude from our office, especially from my district director, Sam Samra, and myself, for being able to take part in the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new police station. We look forward to seeing how this new tool is used to keep our community safe and to be able to send off Chief Gary Breezy after his years of dedicated service to the City of Los Spanos, and to welcome Chief Ray Reyna to this role. The congressman is glad to take part in festivities for Veterans Day here in Los Spanos, and he spent Veterans Day itself everywhere from Modesto to Livingston, Merced, and Atwater, participating in ceremonies honoring our nation's veterans for their service and sacrifice. In other news, Congressman Duarte and Congressman Jim Costa recently led a bipartisan effort to ask the United States Trade Representative Catherine Tai to engage with Turkey regarding newly imposed retaliatory tariffs on American almonds. Such a hike offers other countries such as Spain, Uzbekistan, and Iran an unjustified competitive advantage. Almonds create over 100,000 jobs in the food and agricultural sector, especially in our Central Valley, and 91% of California almonds are grown on family farms. These new tariffs will hurt Valley families, so Congressman Duarte will continue to work with both parties to make sure Washington stands up for our farmers in our Valley. With a new speaker now in place, the People's House has been able to get back to work, and the congressman will continue to advocate for the priorities of working families, including bills such as H.R. 4745, the Delivering for Rural Seniors Act of 2023, of which he was an original co-sponsor, and would establish a pilot grant program to award grants to facilitate the home delivery of commodities under the Supplemental Food Program to low-income elderly persons. Bills such as H.R. 3490, the Water Infrastructure Modernization Act, of which he was an original co-sponsor with Democratic Congressman Ruben Gallego of Arizona, which would amend the Federal Water Pollution Control Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act to authorize grants for smart water infrastructure technology to take advantage of some of the wonderful precipitation we're getting on nights like tonight. One of the first moves the House has made since electing a new speaker is reaffirming America's support for the State of Israel. Congressman Duarte recently voted for H.R. 6126 to provide Israel with the military aid necessary to stop Hamas's brutality from aggressing any further. He cannot stand by and allow terrorists to attack one of our closest allies in the region, and the congressman believes he must do all we can to help protect Israel and its people. Yesterday, a continuing resolution vote came to the floor of the House of Representatives, and our office has released the following statement on this vote. Congressman Duarte voted on the continuing resolution to keep our government open and working on behalf of the American people. A government shutdown would have disrupted many federal programs that everyday Americans rely on, including vital services to our veterans. Now we have the time to continue our appropriations process to regular order for a fiscally responsible budget that will put our nation back on the right track, free from excessive government spending. I'd like to conclude tonight by wishing everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. I'm Ann McCauley, I'm a resident of Los Banos. First, I want to say how First, I want to say how absolutely proud I am of our new police station. Its facilities are phenomenal. There was so much forethought in it to allow for good growth, room for that growth, and then also the state-of-the-art equipment is just, I can't put words into it. I was just so pleased with how it turned out. I know we had hiccups because we needed some of the funds to keep our police and perhaps fire employed, but in the end, we got an extremely exceptional building and, of course, happy to have our new police chief on board, too. Not bad getting a brand-new building at the same time. So congratulations for that. I wanted to talk about moving this council meeting. I used to work over in the Bay Area, and with our schedule, we were a little different. We had our motorhome, we were able to keep it over there, but my husband and I had very different schedules. So that was, we didn't have to travel this every day. But I'll tell you what, I took time off several times over the years that I worked in, at Onozuka Air Force Station, to come over here and talk about something that was on the agenda. But I had to take time off to get over here in time. I shudder to think how much more time a person would have to take off now just to get here. Now that's at 7:00. I don't think that moving the council meeting to 6:30 or 7:00 is going to make a whit's worth of difference unless you've got people streaming in here right now that say, hey, you move it to 6:00, and I'll be here. And you have 30, 40 people that do that. I don't think you're going to get that many extra people because, first of all, you have to, if you get up early in the morning and you're on the road by 3:30, 4:00, and that's just to get wherever you need to be within another two or three hours, and then you put in an eight-to-10, 12-hour shift, then you come back, you don't have time for a meeting. You're exhausted. You want to just go to bed. So I think moving this later does not really do anything. You might get one or two people, but I think for the most part, people that want to be here will be here if they choose to be, and they'll take the time off if the subject is important enough, and that's something that I did. But it's not, this commuting every day and the roads and the traffic and everything are so much worse. I retired 15 years ago, and I go over there only when we have doctor's appointments. And other than that, I wouldn't wish that road on anybody. So I think, you know, getting back and forth to work is one thing, but trying to move a council meeting just to get a few more people to show up, I don't think that really is in the cards. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Creighton, resident of Los Banos. Today, I wanted to talk about the treatment that I have been witnessing of Councilwoman Deborah Lewis. It's with this noticeable escalating behavior that I bring attention to the misogynist treatment the only female council member has been enduring. This behavior is not only detrimental to her well-being, but also undermines the principles of equality and respect that we all expect of the elected council members to uphold. Her contributions, experience, and expertise should be recognized and utilized rather than dismissed or belittled. We should focus on her capabilities and merit rather than engaging in conflicts. She asks the questions her constituents would like answers to, and she does not participate in the joint effort to promote the lack of transparency to this community. Councilwoman Lewis, who appears to be a dedicated public servant, has been subjected to disparaging remarks, disrespect, and exclusion. This not only undermines her credibility and authority, but also sends a damaging message to this community. It appears Ms. Lewis has much knowledge of how city government should be run in a lawful manner and as the public service it should be to its constituents. She seems to possess more knowledge than the rest of the council members combined seem to have. It appears to those of us who are paying attention, the unfair treatment and constant attempts to undermine her knowledge and expertise are simply to conceal mistakes made by others. The foundation of any democratic society is built upon the principles of fairness, equality, and respect. It is disheartening to witness such blatant disregard for these values, especially in a setting where individuals are elected to work as a team for the betterment of the community. The disparaging remarks and condescending attitudes directed toward this council member are not only an insult to her, but to every other woman who wishes to participate in public service. I'm not the first person to bring this up in the public forum, and I probably will not be the last if the haranguing of Councilwoman Lewis persists.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ed Davis, and I actually came here tonight to see Ms. Lewis because I had a little bit of an issue today with the finance department trying to get water turned on at a rental I have. Well, it seems that the code enforcement is constantly harassing my family for the last 23 years that I've lived in Los Banos, and they are denying me the right to turn on water at my house. Well, I should say my renter that wants to rent my house on Delaware over here. So now the city is saying that I owe them $10,500 in fines and refuse to turn on any water at the house where I tend to be trying to move in. This has been continuous harassment. I have all the proof, and something needs to be done about it.
Can you direct it to the Council, please?
And something needs to be done about it because we've had this similar situation. My brother had bought the old movie theater right next door here that's now being turned into a nightclub, and it was immediately put into foreclosure, out of town, and the city backed it up. So a lot of stuff has been happening with our family, so I would like somebody to talk to me. I was actually in, wanted to speak to the city manager today, and conveniently he is in a meeting. I understand that. Nobody ever comes and calls back. When I try to talk to code enforcement, they say, well, it's not in our thing now. You owe us $10,000, or we won't turn on the water for your tenant. So that's all I really have to say, but somebody needs to start listening to what's going on in this town. People ask me, how do you like living in Los Banos? I said, for 23 years, I've been nothing but harassed, and I have the paperwork to back it up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kami Avalar. I want to talk about my favorite subject, the homeless on the rail trail. I know the statement was made that you can't move them or do anything, but that's not true. You can move them. You have moved them. You've moved more to the rail trail because you cleaned it up near the police station for the grand opening. So we've had an addition to our population behind us. Not only are they, is there more, but they've, they're cutting multiple breaks in the fence that go around the runoff pond, and now they're riding their bikes through that, and they're throwing garbage in there. I had a video of two of the homeless people cutting down a tree. You can clearly identify them. I know exactly which encampment they live in. I called the police. They put me on hold for a long time, and then finally said there wasn't anything they could do about it. When I first started calling, I was told to keep calling, and they would go out and cite people. And after multiple citations, then they would be able to do something. But if you can't, if you don't cite them at all, then I don't see what point that is. They're allowed to do with impunity whatever they want out there, and there's no repercussions. Mr. Penaro, part of your job responsibilities are to interface with the community, and that includes an open dialogue with the public about issues that they are bringing up, not just attending community events. I'm asking again for a public discussion about what is being done. We have a homeless advocate. We have code enforcement. Could we possibly have a meeting where they are involved also and let us know what they're doing? It would be, transparency would go a long way on what is happening. Also, that involves the amount of items that are put on the consent agenda. We don't get to talk about them beforehand. They're just put on the consent agenda, and it feels like they're just rammed through. And I think that would work for that also. Mr. Coons' contract that was discussed two weeks ago, I'd like to point out that it seems the first seven job responsibilities listed in his contract are responsibilities of the city manager and not the finance director. Between these two positions, we are paying $600,000 a year for a town with 43,000 people. The last comment I'd like to make is about the statement that was read from the gym owner's last city council meeting, where they said that they were threatened and intimidated by a member of the city council. Mr. Mayor, it is your job to do your due diligence and find out who that was and do something about that. That also goes along with the civility that is on the city council. It's abhorrent, the displays that are happening, and you need to stop it.
Hello, it's me. I don't come to these meetings anymore because you guys are like scarecrows, but I do watch it on TV, on YouTube, and I see before me people who sit there and do absolutely nothing about anything. So let me bring it to your attention that not only do we have homeless population on the rail trail, but outside my bedroom window, there's this huge tent, right? And they have this big black plastic thing on the outside that runs along the rail so that when, if you're on the rail and you're walking along, you don't see their mess. But on my side, on the fence side, whoa, it's horrible. Then, if you were in my guest bedroom on the second floor, you see squatters. They have built a wooden home and covered it with a gray something. They even had a solar panel, and I don't know where they got the money to do that. I don't know what's going on, but you guys aren't doing anything about it. We have squatters now. We have squatters, and that's illegal. And the police officer I spoke to said that they were all going to be cleared out in 10 days. Lie. How many lies do we have to listen to while you guys just sit on your butts and do nothing? And all I have to say is that there will be something that can be done, and that is called voting, and then everybody's job is going to be up for grabs, and then what are you going to do? How about a little action so that you can keep your jobs? You know? I mean, seriously? You're getting paid. I'm just going above your heads at this point. I'm sending out emails to people that are above your heads. I'm not just sitting there doing nothing just because I'm not coming to these meetings anymore. I'm contacting other people that maybe they will help, the city of Los Banos, because the city of Los Banos, their people aren't doing anything, and that's it.
At the last meeting, this council tried to convince the public that it was just a simple mistake, that the company that managed the city's finances for the past 16 months has a suspended LLC and cannot legally conduct business during that time, that it was a simple mistake that travel time was billed to the city at $150 per hour when it was not part of the contract, that it was a simple mistake that travel costs, sometimes in excess of $6,000 per month, were billed to the city when it was not part of the contract, that it was a simple mistake those travel costs were not itemized, and there's no supporting documentation to justify them, that it was a simple mistake that company had no insurance, leaving the city on the hook for their mistakes. Yet, when it comes to the Small Business Assistance Program, the public is supposed to believe that no mistakes were committed by the same company, that the program was conducted perfectly, and all the city's published guidelines and treasury regulations were followed, despite documentation proving otherwise. Documentation showing a misappropriation of funds occurred. Documentation showing illegal quid pro quo occurred. Documentation showing less money was awarded to businesses than was allocated to the program. Documentation showing some businesses were given preferential treatment. Documentation showing some businesses were unfairly discriminated against. For five months, I've been asking for the scores and the scoring system used for the Small Business Assistance Program and have still not received them. The public should be able to see those scores. The public should be given a clear explanation based on the scoring system for why a councilman received the first check out of the program for the maximum amount of $25,000 and was approved in 10 days, while other businesses with a larger negative impact from the shutdown did not receive the maximum and were approved after more than 100 days. Were points given applicants if they're a member of city council? Were points given applicants if they offered city employees a discount? Were points given applicants based on their personal relationships with city employees? Were points taken away if you're unwilling to engage in quid pro quo? The list of grant recipients says the answer to those questions is yes. The scoring system for the Small Business Assistance Program was supposedly ready to go last December. Yet here we are almost a year later with no explanation of the scoring system used to disperse nearly half a million dollars in grant awards. A report on this program was supposed to be done by July. Yet here we are over four months later with no explanations. I'm again requesting, as I originally did five months ago through email, as I have continuously been requesting at these meetings for the past four months, and as other members of the public have through official public records requests that have not been fulfilled, for an explanation of the scoring system and the scores each business received as part of the Small Business Assistance Program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, fellow residents. First things up, I want to announce that we're going to have an 80th commemoration of the Battle of Tarawa. Battle of Tarawa, as you know, happened during the, happened campaign during the Second World War. The Battle of Tarawa is significant because it's the first time the American forces, in this case Marines, encountered the imperialist Japanese forces. Again, it's going to happen on the 19th, and there's a little bit special twist that brings this a little bit local in that there were two Marines, Lance Corporal Brown and Lance Corporal Martinez. Corporal Martinez grew up here in Merced. These two Marines, they enlisted, they shipped out as part of the 2nd Marine Division. During the initial assault on Tarawa, Lance Corporal Brown was shot in a shoulder. Corporal Martinez stopped, rendered aid, and took the individual back to an aid station where that Lance Corporal Brown was then shipped out and survived the war. Unfortunately, Corporal Martinez died approximately 30 minutes after rendering aid. So this is the commemoration and reunification of these two families because Lance Corporal Brown's dying wish to his son was that he locate Corporal Martinez's family and thank them for what his son did. So again, 80th commemoration and very special twist, which brings it local here to Merced Agenda items, agenda items continue to be a problem here. Continue to put agenda items that should not be on the consent agenda on the consent agenda. These items require public participation, public input, and dialogue, and we're not having that. The only time we have dialogue or find out exactly some of the details is when Councilwoman Lewis opens up and pulls it for individual discussion. Then we start getting some of the details from the city staff, which I appreciate very much for their candor and their ability to answer those questions. You know, we paid $1.8 million for a city manager, but at no time have I seen a city manager engage or assist the staff in answering the questions. Again, what are we getting for $1.8 million? A few meetings ago, we had a member of the public talk about and give a vote of no confidence to the city manager because of the retaliation and the poor working environment that the city staff is being subjected to. Last city council, the same individual spoke about the threats and intimidation by by a member of the city council. That is called pay for play. That is called corruption. Stating that they should write a check back to the city of Los Baños and that they should not, would probably not receive favorable treatment and other permits if they submitted them. Again, that is corruption. Mr. Mayor, I ask you to look into these items because that is one sure way of destroying what I hope you're trying to do is to better this city. Corruption is everywhere. But unfortunately, Los Baños is becoming a microcosm of Washington DC, where only the special interests and those giving money to the candidates have access and get questions answered. So again, I ask you to look into these things because the further we go along down this road with this kind of behavior, with these kinds of threats, the worse it is going to be for everyone else. And the worst is going to get out to the business community not to do business in Los Baños because of this corrupting influence. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Mary Boo Garcia speaking on behalf of the Los Banas Downtown Association. Basically, just want to, you know, want you guys to come to the Winter Lighting Celebration, which will be November 30th on a Thursday, 907 Sixth Street, from 6 to 9. We're going to be having Storytime Teen Universe California will be there. Betsy Mendoza, Performance by Legacy Academy Choir will have Dance Explosion and Los Colubre. And we'll also have a window decorating contest. So we are so excited because we have actually 22 exceptional shops participating. And so then we'll have vendors and arts and crafts. And so then we also want to thank the city of Los Banas for their partnership to create a festive holiday atmosphere downtown and to produce the annual Winter Lighting Celebration. So thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Good evening, everyone. I want to second a lot of the things that were said by people tonight. Normally, I just come up and say, let's get that animal shelter going. You've had a million dollars in your pocket for a long time. It needs to get started. But tonight, I have to agree with what people are saying here. One of them is conduct. Okay, you need to conduct yourselves in a better manner. I don't think we would be able to sit out here and conduct ourselves, sniping at each other and the things that go on. It's not okay. I agree that Councilmember Lewis has a lot to say. She brings up a lot of points. I don't see a lot of other people bringing up any points. You're, what you want to do is on the consent agenda. I haven't seen one of them get turned down yet, I don't think. Has there been? It's always approve, approve, approve. So once it's on here, it's pretty much done. And I was told, well, everybody gets this Friday night, the same as you guys do. But what good does that do? We don't have anybody to talk to about it on Friday night or Saturday or Sunday. So I guess I'm not understanding how this is supposed to work and be fair for the people of this city to be involved in city government. I'm not seeing it. Money is being spent in an irresponsible way without concern for taxpayers' opinions. Again, you put it on here, and it's stamp it, it's approved. So we get to say something about it, but that doesn't change anything at all. Has anything been on this consent agenda that hasn't gotten approved? Maybe somebody can look that up. Okay, so I'm, we're all asking for something better. I mean, same people with the same things. Somebody's asking for something from five months ago and doesn't have it yet. Things just aren't happening very quickly. Some things happen pretty quick. You know, they go on this paper and they get approved instantly. But other things that people who pay those taxes are asking for are not getting done.
Hello, Council. My name is Gene Johnson. I'm from the Merced County Republican Assembly. I just want to let you know that we've been doing most of our work on the Merced side, the east side. We are coming over here to the west side. We're going to look for the best, you know, candidates for every position, from city council all the way up to the president. So I would like to just introduce myself again. Gene Johnson, President of the Merced County Republican Assembly. I give some of my cards to the chief here, and maybe you can give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, hi. Roy Todd, volunteer member and director of the Los Banas Chamber of Commerce, just doing an update report for you folks. First of all, I want to say that at this point, we have 227 active members. Things are, things are improving quite a bit over there. We've done a lot of, a lot of work on the website and everything. And I've worked with, actually, my nephew, of all things. All right, my nephew and I have been working with this and trying to get this all in order. And we're, basically, we're self-taught. Okay, so somebody might have said, I don't have the aptitude for that. But you know what? I figure, I usually figure something out. All right, so anyway. At the, the biggest thing we got coming right now is the Christmas Parade. This year's theme is Christmas in Candyland. It will be Saturday, December 2nd, so that should help some of the, some of the commuters, maybe the guys that don't have to work on the weekends. And it'll be downtown Los Banos. Our major sponsor will be Sutter Health in this case. And then after the parade itself, we have, Henry Miller Plaza will have the tree lighting. And of course, we'll have the usual kinds of things like crafts and vendors and food folks there as well. I, I saw in the, in the agenda here that Joe is, I kind of thought he was already here. So, you know, so that was my own ignorance. But anyway, a lot of you have heard my story, but I grew up in a town that had a state highway running through the middle of it. Had 20,000 people, something like that, when, when I was there. And basically, we had, we had a planning, you know, the Planning Commission and so forth like that was so awesome that everything, everything, you know, it was a plan for everything and everything worked really well. And nowadays, it has like about 135,000 people there. They even built a presidential library, a US presidential library there. You may have heard of it. It's called the Reagan Library. Okay, and what I, my point is, the brochure that Joe and his group put out is top-notch. I'll put it up against any, anything, you know, you know. Obviously, I still have family that lives there. And I can tell you that that was as good as you're going to see from anybody like 150,000 or so kind of population. So it was really good, and I wanted to give you kudos for that because sometimes you only hear the bad stuff, right? So there's that. The other thing is, it was really great to visit the jail. I hope that's the only time I have to, but you know, you never know. So I really appreciated that. And it was, I really liked the fact that everybody kind of got together and it was kind of like a good, you know, a little bit more of a kumbaya moment. So I really appreciated that. The other thing, just from the chamber's standpoint, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It seems like, it seems like nowadays, we're almost like bypassing Thanksgiving and that was, to me, always seemed kind of important because my ancestors came here in like 16, like 26 or something like that, right? So, so it's a little weird that it's all of a sudden, everybody just jumps from Halloween to Christmas. But again, I want to wish everybody in the, in the room and my fellow residents of Los Banas a happy Thanksgiving and all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. Kathy Uli. I just wanted to quickly discuss the item on the consent agenda for Imagine Way More. I did look at some of his work. It's really nice. It was a little difficult to find it as it's in your company, but he has been around for a while. He did a nice job with the video for PD. And I don't know if he's done any other work for the city. I believe there was an ad he did for the Compound Gym. Anyway, work looks good, but here's my thinking on this. Is we have up to, well, let's just say we don't even go to 7,500 a month, but let's just, five grand a month. We're at 60,000 a year. That's more than the grant that the shelter is operating their spay and neuter clinic on. Well, the one that the vet is working with the shelter animals. So we're using the grant money. That should probably be funded through the city, not grant money. It seems like the grant money could be used to really work with the public because we can't really finance through city money something that would compete with local businesses. But we sure could provide some access to really truly low-cost spay and neuter using grant monies. And it would be nice to see, if we have the money for social media, that type of money available, it would be nice to see that type of money actually directed at a service at the shelter or that really, that needs money. It really does. And then see things like grant money go for other services. I am not a nonprofit, as I think you all are aware by now, but I do have a Facebook page that's dedicated to working with feral and stray cats. I get contacted all the time from people who need low-cost spay and neuter. And I'm telling them to drive to Fresno. And, you know, just be, you know, like, they ask if there are vouchers available. I tell them to contact PD about that. But that doesn't really cover the, the cost that most of these people are able to pay. And especially when they're trying to get multiple animals fixed that they're dealing with at the residence. So it kind of all just circles back to the whole thing. There's way too many strays that are breeding out there. There's just this massive problem. And it would just be awesome to see grant money go for extra services like that and the city to finance the vet who's on staff at the shelter. Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Anyone else? All right, this time we'll close the public forum. Move on to item seven, consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 241668 to 242033 in the amount of $2,288,086.79. City Council Resolution Number 6707, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Imagine Way More LLC for social media content services not to exceed 7,500 a month. City Council Resolution Number 6708, approving and adopting final tract map number 2015-01, South Point at Regency Park, Phase 10 and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6709, ratifying the city manager's approval of the employment agreement with Parks and Recreation Director Joseph R. Heim. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, I'd like to pull item B for discussion and a separate vote, please. B is in void, yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Okay, thank you very much. Stacy, could you just generally go over this project for the public's sake so we can have an idea of what, what the city is doing and what the intent is?
Okay, sure, thank you, City Council and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So this item, the request is to authorize the city manager to sign a professional service agreement. The Community and Economic Development Department prepared a request for proposal, an RFP, soliciting qualified agencies to provide social media content services to maximize Los Banas' online presence through diverse, engaging, and tailored content. So with the goal of this is to really put Los Banas on the map, to be able to show all of the progress and the projects that we are doing from our new police station to GMS 209 opening. And that was just, just to give you some insight of where staff was. Originally, when staff was looking at putting social media together, we were looking at project by project. And so staff went out with a request for proposal to be able to do something more on a permanent basis because each department has been wanting to showcase and provide the public information on all of the good that's been going on, all of the good projects. So that is what prompted the request for proposal. And the Economic Development Department is really, who is in charge and spearheading this as all of this does benefit economic development of our community as we are trying to attract industry and just let our community know what is going on. So the scope of services include the creation of social media content for Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok with customized captions for each content piece to ensure peak engagement. The deliverables include video reels, talking head videos, an online gallery, social media management, content calendar, and monthly strategy calls. The RFP was published in the Merced Sunstar and published on the city's website. And in addition, staff emailed local firms, which all had business licenses in the city of Los Banas that specialize in cinematography, to solicit for proposals. We did receive four responsive proposals, and that list of proposers was posted on the city's website yesterday from qualified firms. The only firm that was local was Imagine Way More LLC. And after reviewing and evaluating all proposals, staff recommends to the city council authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Imagine Way More for $7,500 per month for one year. And the contract amount for social media content services has been included in the already adopted 2023-2024 fiscal budget under economic development, which I had already planned for marketing for the city of Los Banas, which this will fall under, on that account line item. So I hope I was able to provide a general enough explanation.
Thank you. You made a statement that the posting of the other proposals were put on the city website yesterday?
So Councilmember Lewis, if I may, so request for proposals, RFPs, are not posted. What we do post is the result sheet. So this sheet with the results of who provided proposals is what is, is what is provided. Now, when the city does bids, and those are mostly for contracts, say a capital improvement project, bids are always posted with the bid amount. But the, and sometimes then those bids are included in the staff report. It is custom, at least for me, and every RFP that I've provided with professional service agreements, that I only provide the winning proposer. And that's because staff has done their due diligence in evaluating all the proposals. Per the municipal code, we are not required to go by the lowest bid because that would be a bid. We go by value of proposals and what fits the best needs of the city. And so with the evaluation, which it was evaluated not by, not just myself, but other staff members, and the evaluation came out with Imagine Way More, who was our local proposer to be on top.
Okay. And with that indicated, the other proposals that were submitted or, you know, through the RFP process, did they have a dollar amount attached to their businesses?
Each proposal did have a dollar amount. Yes, they did.
Okay. And can you share that with, with the council?
Yes, so they ranged from five thousand dollars to forty-three thousand dollars a month. And the closest to Los Banas, other than Imagine Way More, was San Jose at forty-three thousand dollars a month.
Okay. And this, this was like-for-like on whatever the city had requested in the RFP?
Right. Exactly. So our evaluation process went through the RFP, and absolutely it was, we evaluated based on response to our RFP.
Okay. And I know that we always give that five percent advantage to our locals, which is, is, is good. We've always tried to do business with local people who have businesses here that are local. It, it's always been a good idea for me to try to do that rather than to, you know, go outside of the area. A few other questions that I have. I noticed in the, the, under description that the scope of services for social media included Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok. Now, you know, it's controversial. Our federal government has already indicated to us that TikTok is a, a Chinese socialist company that does spying on our country. There are some states within the United States that have forbidden their government agencies to do business with TikTok. I know that we haven't done that here in Los Banas, but it, it just kind of brings pause to me that we would want to have advertisement out there on a, a social media site that, that technically, as we've heard from our federal government that does spying on, on our citizens. So I'm just wondering why that one is included.
And from the, from staff's perspective, it's just to broaden that reach. There is a demographic, and it's typically a younger demographic, our, our teenagers and twenty-somethings that are more into TikTok versus Instagram or Facebook. Facebook seems to be a more older demographic, and Instagram seems to kind of be more of the middle age, and it's really just trying to grab the whole spectrum of all demographics.
So there, there's no other social media site out there for the younger demographics that we could use that doesn't have this attachment to it?
TikTok is what is most widely used.
Well, that kind of saddens me that we would have to resort to that. And that's just my personal opinion. It's no reflection on anybody else on the council, but it's, it's just mine. And I did look at the website, and I noticed that this business was established in August of this year. Do we have any indication, any other clients that this business may have represented in that short period of time?
Yes, so this business became a limited liability company in August, but was a sole proprietor prior to that and does have a history prior to August when he became an LLC. And this company has done business with lots of businesses in Los Banas and has done some work already for the city on a case-by-case projects and has worked with various restaurants. In the public forum, it was mentioned, the Compound Gym has utilized their services. So it, it's a pretty reputable company within our community that does great work.
Okay. You know, we had someone from the audience come up and speak about the junior college. And, you know, I, I have to kind of agree with that because I know that there are opportunities through our college system whereby, you know, young people who are majoring in social media, influencers, the whole nine yards, could be given an opportunity to do an internship with the city of Los Banas. We have employees in our city today who had that opportunity to do an internship with the city of Los Banas and became employees as a result of that. It, you know, this, this, this is going to add up to ninety thousand dollars for one year, and, you know, it's a lot of money for one year. And I'm, I'm also kind of concerned as to why this contract is only going to be for one year. I mean, what, what was the determination to say that it's going to start tomorrow and then it's going to end a year from now on, on today's date, which is what, the fifteenth? Was there a reasoning behind this only being a one-year contract?
Well, just to ensure that the city is receiving the reach, that's, the purpose of this is for economic development, for marketing. So we would like to take that year to analyze and determine the success in this program. This would be the first time that we would have a social media content services within the city. So we feel that a, a year would give us ample time to be able to determine whether we are getting that value and whether then to continue those services beyond that.
Okay. And was there a consideration to reach out to our junior college to see if there were students who would qualify to do this particular job for the city?
No.
As a, you know?
No, we did not reach out to the high schools or the junior colleges. We specifically reached out to the business community. So we looked at our business licenses and reached out, solicited for RFPs. And that was to ensure this business would need to be onsite to various capital improvement projects. They need to be insured, need to have business licenses. So we wanted to make sure that we had a professional business that the city could rely on.
And, and I understand that, but I, you know, I feel like this is a good time for our city to engage with our community college to help students who want to go into this field, to have an opportunity to work with the city, to be able to gain that experience and show that they can do the job. And in, in light of that, it would save us ninety thousand dollars a year because we have been spending a lot of money of lately on a lot of things. I, I'm going to say this, you know, again, I, I went to the website and I, I listened to all the videos that were on that website. And one particularly disturbed me very much. And I know that they did some good media for our city police department and some informational, informational content for our city police department. But some of the other stuff was like gangster-related information. And there was one particular video that was number twelve from top left to right that had the N-word in it, and that really disturbed me grossly. It was very graphic verbally and a racial disrespect to my people. And, you know, if I'm going for a contract with a city, I would have taken that down before I even let the city look at it. Perhaps maybe someone didn't think that anyone was going to review this, but I did. And I'm very disturbed that the city would engage with a company that had a philosophy to put something like that up on their website. So this may be a very good company, but I cannot vote for someone who's going to do that kind of stuff and still have it out there in the community and think that it's all right. Not in today's time. Not in today's time. It is not right. So that's where I'm going to leave it. Over and above the ninety thousand dollars, which I think is exorbitant, to, for our, our collective staff not to look at that and see that information on there and not use that as part of the evaluation process is really disheartening to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Anyone else? Would like to speak?
I didn't look at the personal site. I don't feel moving, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with knowing or with not knowing exactly what's on there. So I'd like to have this item pulled until we can double-check, verify, and figure out what's going on. I think the services provided are great. Nothing against the company that's providing the services. The videos that they've already put out are really first-class. We know social media is really the new age newspaper. So I would like to revisit this topic, but maybe we've got to push it back a couple weeks so we can just further, you know, cross our teeth and dot the i's. So that's where I'm going to stand tonight.
So if that's, was the pleasure of the council, you could make a motion to table that particular item and then move on to the other three items.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, make a motion. And do I have a second? Mr. Gonja?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any? To table? Oh, to oppose it? So I have three yes to oppose and one no. Three ayes to table and one no. Three ayes to table and one no. All right, I think everybody's back. We're back in session at 7:26. And I understand item B has been tabled and we need a motion for items A, C, and D that remain on the consent agenda. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the remaining consent agenda, item A, C, and D.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to item eight, the public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein in or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So for this, we're going to go to item 8A with Community and Economic Development Director Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this item was first brought to the City Council on November 1st, and at that meeting, the council waived the first reading and introduced by title ordinance number 1203 to amend the Los Manos zoning map. And at that time, I went through a PowerPoint presentation and went through the update of the zoning map and the reasons for the request for the update. And this is so that our zoning map, which is a tool to implement the general plan, is in accordance with General Plan Update 2042. So if there are no specific questions, I will conclude my report and ask that the City Council waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1203 by title to amend the Los Manos zoning map in accordance with the Los Manos General Plan Update 2042. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We'll start with the questions from council first. If there's any questions. Okay, now we'll move on to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, questions for staff regarding this item. No? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilmember Jones?
Just ready to make a motion, if you're ready. Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1203 as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Move on to item nine. Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. What'd I get? Rookie move. All right, do we have a, I'll go to Councilmember Jones on this.
All right. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1203 as submitted.
All right. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. How that passes? All right. Okay, moving on to item nine, consideration of the proposed measure converting the offices of city clerk and city treasurer from elected to appointed posts pursuant to California Government Code 36508 through 36510. And for this, we'll go to City Manager Panera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We brought this before council for your folks to consider bringing before voters. Today, we have Chris, I believe it is, here with us, and he'll be able to speak a little bit more about this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, let me say it's nice to be here with you in person after an entirely virtual redistricting process last year. Nice to meet you. I'm here mostly to answer questions, but because there has been a request for that we draft a resolution for the council's consideration to consider switching the city clerk and the treasurer's offices to, from their current elected positions to appointed positions. Throughout the state of California, as just a general matter, cities are increasingly moving this direction, partly because the qualifications for these offices are getting increasingly complicated, and it's getting harder to find people who are qualified to fill them, and also to attract people because as an elected office, the people to fill those offices need to live in the city. As appointed offices, that's not the case. And I, if you, I don't want to repeat the staff report, but the trend over the last 30 years has been increasingly in that direction, to the point where a significant majority of clerks and treasurers throughout the state of California are now appointed offices. In fact, I just saw earlier this week, the city of Santa Clara is putting a measure very much like this one on the March ballot as well. So I don't want to belabor the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. So we'll start with questions from council. No questions from council? All right, we'll open the public forum regarding this item.
I'm short. When you speak, if you pull your microphone down farther, we might be able to hear you better because I can't hear Josh very well out there, just to let you know. On item 9A, I feel that the city clerk and treasurer should be a person not under the thumb of the city manager and remain in an elected position. If a person doesn't run for this position, you guys have, can appoint because you did it for city treasurer. So I don't understand why I'm spending $5,500 or a percentage, however it is, to put this on a ballot if it's something that you can already appoint if nobody runs. It shouldn't be a city employee because they're influenced by city personnel. If it's somebody who's not a city employee, I feel that they look more towards taking care of the city's population, not their job. It's just an expense that I don't think is necessary. I, it also goes into, you requested how much it would cost to put something on the ballot in May, and you got an answer, I think it was $16,000, but that was for three measures. But you're only putting out two. I'm assuming you combined them or whatever you did to get it. And $5,500 for something that I don't feel is necessary and would probably be detrimental. I don't care if it's a trend in other cities. I'm looking here. I have a right to vote for who I want to take city minutes and to follow the rules that are set up for a city, not an employee, especially an at-will employee that could get fired if they don't do what they're told to do. So it seems to me it would be better to just leave it alone. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
I, most of my questions, I don't know why other cities are doing it. Is it just because it's easier and they have them there in their pocket all the time? I don't know. You said I'm supposed to ask him?
Well, I mean, he did address that previously, yes.
Yeah. It's a public forum, and usually at a public forum, I'm just here voicing my opinion.
Well, we're giving you the opportunity to ask questions.
Oh, and I'll ask.
Okay.
Why do the other cities do it?
Yep, please do.
There you go, I'll share it with you. Yeah.
As I mentioned, it has, it's because these offices are under increasing requirements from state law in terms of their certifications, in terms of their qualifications, and all of the elaborate systems that they have to be familiar with. I mean, the chief financial officer has all sorts of obligations under state and federal law that didn't exist when these offices were created.
Chief financial officer? We're talking about city clerk?
City treasurer.
Okay.
As an example. And so those requirements didn't exist 100 years ago when these offices were created. It's just become incredibly difficult to find people who are qualified to fill these offices by limiting your pool only to.
But if they weren't qualified, they wouldn't run, correct?
That's correct, and sometimes.
So then why don't we allow them to run and not have a city employee?
They do run now. This is an elected position, and we're attempting to move to an appointed position.
I know, but you're taking away our right to vote for it.
Your city clerk has been your HR director and has ran unopposed for 13 years.
Because she does a damn good job.
So if she was appointed for that position, and we wouldn't have to pay for an election every time because she's run unopposed because she's qualified.
But if it is an appointed, since all you guys have a grudge against Lucy, she wouldn't be the one that got appointed.
So I think we're getting off track as to.
Well, we're getting off track because you put something to change it to be appointed.
Correct.
Which would be at your discretion. We all know, stuff that's going on around here, we all know what everybody's feelings are for Lucy.
Which has nothing to do with this public hearing whatsoever.
It does.
Yes, yeah. Of an employee being in an elected position.
Because if Lucy wasn't an employee, she'd still be my city clerk. Because she was voted for. Do you see what I'm saying?
I.
She, yes, she has two hats, and she wears both of them well. But if it's appointed and she retires, or she no longer is employed by the city, she's still a city clerk.
Where do you think she does her city clerk time at? On which dollar?
I heard that as an appointed, she gets $100 a month for benefits?
So then we're losing on the HR side in time.
But she goes to city hall meetings, does she clock in for that?
So maybe we need to reform the whole thing, and this is the first start, the first step?
That might be, but my question is, is why am I paying almost $6,000?
It's actually a cost, it's actually a cost savings. It's actually a reduction of almost $6,000 per election. If it's an appointed position, it's actually a cost savings.
Usually, when you have a city clerk running, there's other things on the ballot, correct?
Not for, it's still, it's.
It's not done yearly.
It's still an election.
But there's other thing.
I, I think to the point is, are we going to find a qualified person per the state laws and how they've expanded for $100 a month to come do this job, which is, again, requires much more hours to do that? I think that's an impossible task to ask, to find a qualified person and say, here's $100 a month and be here and do this.
But that's how much you're paying now for city clerk.
Who's also a city employee.
I didn't look in to see how much the stipend is that Lucy gets. I'm assuming 100? So that's 100, and you have a qualified person appointed, but when you had, she went home, sorry, Tomas, Kim, doing it, does she clock in all those hours?
She was a city employee doing the dual role.
But she was still the treasurer.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So I don't know, does Lucy clock in and do you pay her for the hours she sits there?
She's a salaried employee of the city. She's being paid regardless.
Okay, I just don't understand the point. I would rather vote for this person, whoever it may be, whether it's Lucy, whether it's full Lucy or Lucy.
I think that's the point we're trying to make. It's been Lucy for 13 years. Do we, do we need an election?
And I've been voting.
Correct, but do we need?
For that time.
Do we need an election for a person who's qualified to fill that position who has been?
She is qualified, that's why she continues to be reelected.
So one of the things that we're doing is trying to plan for the future because at some point Lucy may retire, and then what do we do? So we're thinking 10, 20, 50 years out, not just today. And again, if we put out a position that says $100 a month, be here 30 hours a week and handle the city clerk's duties, and we need you to have several qualifications per these guidelines, I'm pretty sure we're not going to get the applicant pool that.
And then you can appoint. Why change it?
Who would we appoint then, right?
Then you would do what you would do anyways. You would.
Be a city employee.
Or you would pull an employee, or you would pull, why change something if you can still get the end results that you're looking for, that somebody would be filling that position?
Because this is.
Whether it's elected or whether it's an employee.
Because other cities are smart enough to transition to a succession plan, and we should as well.
I, I just, I don't see the necessity of it. I really don't. And because I don't trust my city, I keep thinking you have an ulterior agenda that I've said in a lot of meetings. There's something that's going on behind the scenes that I don't see.
That's, that's, sure, absolutely. Go ahead, Councilmember Lambert.
Now I feel like I'm going to get frightened. Well, guys, help pack me up here.
No, no, I, I, I don't have anything against Lucy, so you keep bringing up we have a grudge. I think Lucy does a great job on her city clerk side, but like what we're, what we're trying to do here is try to move the city into the right direction for, for the future. Lucy, like they've said, she has run unopposed. Lucy, I almost feel sometimes last, like last year, well, because we have to have a city clerk, she feels like, oh, nobody's going to run against me, I'm, you know, who are we going to have? So she puts her name on the ballot, you know, so.
I don't think that's it. Only because I know Lucy.
No, but I'm just thinking that. I'm just, hang on.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think.
Don't put words in my mouth.
No, this is how I feel.
He's telling you his opinion.
Okay. This is why, when it comes down to it, and again, you said a while ago, we all have a grudge. I don't have a grudge. I think she does a great job over there when she reads everything, she helps me out when I'm working as mayor pro temp. But what the way I feel that when she ran this last year, even with Kim Tomas, she didn't step back in, she said that she didn't want to be a part of it. So yes, we had to go right straight then to appoint, you know, the new city treasurer. The same way, the way I feel Ms. Lucy, she might be getting tired, you know, you know, so, so, you know, it's what I look at it, but again, and also, none of this, even if it's elected or if it approves, you know, next March, nothing goes into effect until 2025. So if someone runs or if we appoint, or what if she's the only one that puts the application in to be, to be appointed? Everybody, when we appoint, it's not the city manager that's appointed, it's the whole council right here that makes the decision to appoint. So I, I just, I feel, and this is still putting it in your guys' hands still in March, and remember, not having it on the ballot the rest of the, in the future saves us money. So you're not falling that part of it either.
So you don't have to put the city clerk on it.
Are the city treasurer now? Correct. So we're trying to get the city, just like the gentleman said, you know, San Jose, you know, they're putting the motion into their, or Santa Clara, putting it in for their measure.
So what city still have elected city clerks?
Only one in this county.
Only, yeah.
One in this county, and which one is that?
I believe it's Atwater.
Atwater? And what size is that? I don't know the population of Atwater. And we're 40,000.
No, we're 48, almost 48, 49,000 now.
Don't, don't say 50 because then they'll cut costs.
I think, I think, I think the point that we're trying to make is you're paying for an election regardless. For 13 years, it's been the same person, and all we're asking for is in March for the voters to choose if they want to keep that route, keep paying for the election, or have it be an appointed person. And again, it's going to be your decision to make, not mine. But we're trying to give the decision to the people because, and again, I personally, I've known Lucy 20 years. I think she does a great job at city clerk, but at some point in 30, 40, 50 years, Lucy will not be your city clerk. She's going to want to retire.
But then she won't run, and then you can appoint, correct?
But again, why, why are we waiting 30, 40 years to transition to a succession plan?
I just don't wanna spend $11,000.
Then you get to vote in March on your opinion.
Oh, honey, I vote.
That's, that's why we're here, right? That's why we're here. So the, the purpose is to give the decision to the voters.
So I'm spending $11,000 in the hope that you get 2/3 of the population to say yes.
It's not $11,000.
Well, it is for that and the mayor position.
That's a whole separate item.
The next one. But if, since I have so much time, I think the mayor position shouldn't be something-
We're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss the mayor position.
Okay, so I have to wait. Okay. I'll wait and get back up again if it's okay, and doesn't mind crawling across their lap.
All right. Do you have any other questions for this gentleman?
Um, that's it. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I don't, I think it's a waste at this time. If you wanna do it before the 2025, I, I don't know. You still have the option to appoint, is what I'm saying. So you run an election, nobody applies, then you appoint.
And then we spend an election $5,000 for no reason.
Or you can now take a chance of it not passing and be in the same boat that you're in.
But I think the goal is to give it to the people to decide.
I, I just look at wasting more money. Our city seems to be doing a lot of that. I have a feeling-
Yes? Oh, can you, can you come up here so we can hear?
Is the elected position an at-will position? Do they have the ability to be fired from, by the City Manager or the City Counselor? If they are appointed, is that an at-will position then? That's my, thank you.
Any other questions?
My name is Matthew Gonzalez, from Antioch, California. Before you go, sir, I have one question for you. Are you an attorney? Okay, that's all right. The state of California is in dire situation right now because of people like this attorney here. They endorse corruption. They bring their reputation to the forefront with attorney all over it and claim they know the law. Yet, all they're doing is pushing more and more corruption upon the people who work every day to pay the tax dollars you guys so easily want. Like you, Mr. Mayor, you were gonna appoint your nephew, I believe it was, to do the social media. That's the rumor that we heard. I don't know if that's the case. Do you know the guy? I don't know. That's what I wanted to ask you. But that's corruption when you start nepotism going down that, that road. That's, that's not right.
I'm not related to-
I'm sure there's kids-
Sir, I'm not related to anybody that's in the chamber.
Okay, okay, my apologies. I completely got that wrong.
And this is off topic.
I completely apologize.
Listen, and we're gonna stick to the topic.
Now, let's stick to the topic.
Please.
You're basically looking to find out whether your City Clerk and your Treasurer should be appointed, correct? Or you would ra- rather that happen. What you're doing is you're allowing yourselves to be able to remove the person when they don't do what you want. And the attorneys know this. Attorneys have been stacking the deck forever. I can tell you right now, I, it, it's the case. Mariposa County Conservatorship, Jerry Cox, look him up. They stole 427 acres of, from him because of attorneys like this who want to push a corruption narrative.
We're here, we're not here to discuss this.
So what you're doing is you're basically allowing these positions to become appointed. So if this person doesn't do what you want, well, they gotta go. The people have no say when that happens. You should not make these appointments to these positions. You should continue to allow the people to speak their will as to who they want in these positions. And it is appalling that attorneys are trying to corrupt my state of California.
Anyway, we're not, hey, excuse me, you can, you can address the counsel. Thank you.
So, I am here speaking as a citizen. I am not representing the shirt that I wear at this moment. Um, as an actual citizen of Los Manos, I personally would like to not, or I would like to see this not be an election position, elected position. It frustrates me years and years and years of only seeing one name on the ballot. It could be the current person, but when there's only one person, I don't feel like I even have a choice to vote. I can vote no, but if somebody's just checking the boxes, that person is going to win the position. And I just feel that, how is that ensuring that the person is qualified? How is that ensuring that that person is actually doing the best job for the city? And whether they're at-will or not, if they're doing a good job, then they'll stay in that position. If they're not doing a good job with the city, the citizens' best interest, then there's a recourse for it. So I'm actually for putting it as an elected position, or I'm sorry, as a hired position.
Thank you. All right, any, anyone else?
Thank you again. Right now, the people have to say as to who occupies those positions, regardless of whether, uh, the amount of people that, uh, submit, uh, intend to run for those positions. It is independent of the council and of the City Manager, and that's what we need here. Because other cities are doing it, it's never a good reason to do anything, just because somebody else is doing it. I know he articulated a couple of points. However, how much is this position gonna get in salary? What's the additional cost to the city in salary and benefits? Those questions haven't been answered, or I'm asking, hopefully you can get an answer on that. But it, it seems more of a consolidation of power to have influence over other positions. Uh, again, if that individual doesn't do exactly as they're told, then they'll have retaliation, which we've already seen. We've already had members of various work unions come in and say they had a vote in no confidence because of the retaliations and toxic work environment that's prevalent within the city staff. So again, adding more personnel to that for that individual then to further exert themselves and bully these individuals, I think is not the right direction. Maybe in the future, maybe so. But again, just like the previous speaker stated, if there's no one there, you can appoint someone. I don't think it's a good idea. It's not the right time, and it's not the right counsel for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, I'll tell you, just like Patricia, this has nothing to do with, with the shirt I'm wearing. I've been in this city for over 50 years. I've seen only one person on the ballot ever in 50 years. It's been the, the City Clerk and the City Treasurer that was a city employee. Why waste the money to put their names on the ballot every election that the city has to pay for each person on the ballot? You have to pay money. Why not let the public decide if they wanna have an appointed person or an elected person? So I think you're doing the, doing the right thing. You're going in the right direction. Let the public decide. They get to vote on it. They, they complain they, they're not getting to vote on anything. They're getting to vote on that to whether or not it's an appointed position or an elected position. I can also tell you, nobody in their right mind, Lucy, don't take offense to this. Nobody in their right mind would do either one of those jobs for $100 a month because there's about $1,000 worth of work that they do, if not more.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't have a Chamber of Commerce shirt on right now, so just, just try to pretend, okay? Roy Todd, I live in District 3, have businesses in District 4 and District 2, and I have family members that live in District 1, so I got all four covered in one way or another. Uh, as the folks up there know, we didn't have anybody run for Treasurer. So I'm sitting in the meetings, waiting my turn to do the chamber report, and I just sat there and said, "Nobody wants to be the Treasurer." Well, heck, you know, shoot, if they'll, if they'll have some progress out of the deal, I'll go ahead and volunteer. That's all, that's all I was trying to do, all right? And, uh, so while I was trying to figure all that out, I went, I went online and, uh, and I contacted, there's something of, uh, I don't know the name of it right now, but it was kinda like the California Association of Treasurers, you know, for municipalities or something like that, right? So I, I called them up, said, "What do I need to do?" And they gave me like the curriculum and all that kinda stuff, so I just fully expected because, you know, all due respect, I'm the insane one that said, "Yeah, okay, I'll do it, all right, okay?" 'Cause I, you know, I wa, I was just trying to help, okay? So that's, so that's the point I wanna make, and I think when they start talking about the complexity and so forth, what's, you know, what's expected of the position and that sort of thing? That's, that's the effort I was taking, uh, and, and basically got called like 10 minutes before and said, "Okay, go ahead and show up down here, and I hope you're, I hope you're ready," you know, so, to, to have a talk about it. So I think, I think that's the point, and then the other point is well taken. You know, "Hey, we can vote for it in yes or no, and then however it goes, that's how it goes," right? So that's, that's it. But I just, you know, I just wanted to make it clear that, uh, you know, I, I went through the process, uh, through the appointment process and so forth, and, uh, you know, there was, there were some things that I, I tried to let roll off my back because my life didn't change the day after they decided to go with somebody else, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, seeing now closes the public hearing on this item. All right. Councilmember Jones?
Oh, it was still on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, yeah, let me go to Councilmember Lewis, actually. Yep.
Um, so I'm not sure who can answer this question for me, but since this apparently is gonna go to the ballot, to, you know, the vote is gonna be to take this to the ballot. Has anybody done a cost analysis on what these positions, this position is gonna cost us? Are we still gonna pay $100 a month? Or is there something in our budget telling us what we're gonna pay, uh, uh, someone to hold this position?
So I can speak on to, as it now, the position, as my understanding, is $100 a month and a current city employee has the position.
No, I'm not talking about who's holding it.
Correct.
I'm talking about if this goes to ballot, what is it gonna cost the city in the future to pay someone? Is it still gonna be $100 a month, or is it gonna be a different amount? And was it budgeted to do that?
Well, I think that it's something that has to be voted on first before you can-
Well, you can vote on it, but if you don't have the money other than $100 a month, um, who's gonna apply for this job at $100 a month?
Yeah, that's a point I've been trying to make for a while now. Who's gonna apply for this job if they're not already an internal city employee?
Yeah, and, and, you know, it, someone who's been in this position and has been on the ballot time after time, obviously, has gone through extensive training, holds that position. And I think the, the residents of Los Manos have honored that because it means that you've gotta go through that training. So, at some point, you know, maybe she won't wanna do it, I don't know. But apparently, according to what I'm hearing tonight, is that regardless of whether Ms. Maloney is still employed by the city, by 2025, this position is gonna convert anyway. I, is that my understanding? That's what I thought I heard someone say, that 2025.
So, certainly depends on whether the measure gets put on the ballot to begin with, which would be March of next year. And if the, if the measure passed, Ms. Maloney's term would term out in, I think, 2025. And so there would be no change until then. If the ba, if the measure goes to the ballot in March and there, it's voted no, then there is no change from what we're doing right now. So this, this proposal tonight, this resolution simply puts it on the ballot to determine whether or not, going forward, it's gonna be an elected or appointed position. And depending on what the outcome of that is, that will then determine what's gonna happen next. But Mrs. Mrs. Maloney will continue to be the clerk for the rest of her term, no matter what.
Okay, and after that term is up, then if, if it goes on the ballot and the people approve it, then it will convert to an appointed position?
Correct. So then her, she would term out at the end of her term, and the council would select and make an appointment, and I assume probably totally restructure the clerk's position to a full-time clerk's position, which is really warranted here. And that's kinda what's, that's kinda what the impetus behind this is. And that's what, why many cities are moving to it, is they have full-time clerk staffs that are not elected positions.
So those full-time clerk staff, the point I'm trying to make is that they're not paid $100 a month.
No, definitely not, not, the $100, the $100-
I realize that this is just something that we're looking at specifically to put it on the ballot for election purposes. But since this council is forward-thinking, I would hope that they would think about, where are we gonna get the money to pay someone to be full-time in this position? And, and I, you know, I know that's not the topic of discussion tonight, but I think that it, it needs to be brought forward pretty quickly, you know, 'cause it's, well, this budget is for '23, '24, but it, um, it certainly is gonna have to be something in the next year's budget. And economically, in our country, we don't know what's gonna be happening. I mean, it could be good, it could be bad. But, um, that's certainly something that I would, I would like this council to be looking at now as to what it's gonna cost us, you know? And, and the next, you know, statement I'd like to make is that, you know, we've got, and there may be more or less, we have the Chief of Police, our, our chief, our police commanders, our Fire Chief, our Assistant Fire Chief, if we ever get one, Public Works Director, if we ever get one, Assistant Public Works Director, if we ever get one, our newly-appointed Park and Rec Director, our Community Economics and Development Director, um, are all at-will positions. And now, we're mo, we're trying to move this position, these two positions into at-will. So, um, you know, it, it makes me nervous that we have these many at-will positions in our city. So I, I just, I feel very uncomfortable that one person gets to make the decision as to who gets hired and who gets fired when they feel that the job is not being met. Um, it's all, it's all, uh, subjected to one person. So, uh, I, I just, I don't see this happening, and I, I, I really don't care. Again, you know, one of our public members said about other cities, "I really don't care what other cities are doing." We've been doing fine here in Los Manos with these two positions, and, you know, because one person decided not to run again, and we appointed someone to do so, um, there could be someone who may run against our current Treasurer. But I, I, I can't see this happening right now in our city. It's, it's just too much pressure, in my opinion, to move a lot of positions into at-will positions. So, you know, public, you know what you have to do. You make the final decision. We don't make the final decision. Uh, the decision up here is whether or not it's gonna be on the ballot. But the public as voters, you will make the final decision as to how you want this position to be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones, did you have a comment?
I'll be honest, this is something that's just not worth my time fighting. I'll let the people decide when it's on the ballot, so.
All right, so. So I'll just, again, throw my two cents. I think that what I've heard in my first year's office is that people wanna have a voice. I've just been hearing that. I've heard that tonight at the podium several times. We wanna have a voice. We wanna have a say. Uh, and that's what this item does. Vote for it. If you don't want it, vote no. If you want it, vote yes. It's that simple. Um, but I think it's important that, again, we give the voice to you. So it's, it's your decision to make from a business standpoint and from, again, just what, you know, and, and not 'cause everybody else is doing it, but it does make sense. We spent $5,600 for the same person to be on the ballot 13 years, and that same person who's a qualified city staff member, who, again, in a succession plan, I would love the next person, if appointed, to be trained under Lucy. I think that's ideal, and to learn from somebody who's sat in that seat for a long time and has a lot of knowledge to share. And so that would be something, again, succession planning, that I would be looking forward to if, if it came down to that, so. Um, so that, that's my two cents. Um, do we need a motion? Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve City Resolution Number 6710. As read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. And can we get a roll call vote, please?
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis? Yanez?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 10. And for this one, I also get to step down. It's okay, I'm not, not related to anybody on this paper, so I'm going to step down anyway. All yours, Ken.
All right, now we'll go ahead and move on to item 10. Consideration of Proposed Measure Change in the Term of Office of Mayor From Two Years to a Four-Year Pursuant to California Government Code 34900.
Yes, thank you. So the background of this, as discussed a little bit in the staff report, is that 10 years ago, until 10 years ago, the city council was all elected at large. The mayor was elected to a two-year term and the rest of the council to four-year terms. In 2014, the city was sued under the California Voting Rights Act and at that time submitted to the voters a proposal to move to, to keep the elected mayor, but to move to four district elections for the rest of the council. And at the time, there was no real focus on the terms of office for those positions. And so the question is, you know, under the, the government code, do the voters want to continue the current system of terms? Two years for the mayor, four years for the city council members? Or to line up the, the terms so that everybody has four? And the, the idea behind the current system and keeping the separate mayor was to maintain a separate sort of citywide perspective on the council while also having the districts to comply with the Voting Rights Act and also then to focus on discrete parts of the city. And so, yeah, the question is whether this would better align that citywide perspective with then the terms of the, the district-based representatives as well. I do want to clarify because I, I think there, I, I understand there may have been some confusion, that this would not extend the mayor's current term. He's up for election at the end of 2024. That office would still come up for election at the end of 2024. And whoever's elected at that time, whether it be him running for reelection or somebody else entirely, that person would be the first person to serve four years. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody here on the dais? Ms. Lewis? All right, we'll step down to the public, go open up to the public for a...
Um, I just, do I direct it to him again?
Yes.
Okay. The question I have, when we went to districts, those had to be a four-year term? Did they have to be a four-year term? When we went to the districts?
They, they main- well, we, all we, we didn't focus on whether they had to be four-year terms or not. Under the government code, they are four-year terms.
Okay. So under government code, it's also two years for the mayor?
It's two years or four years, depending on what the voters...
Okay.
In other words, the voters have a choice.
Okay. Then my question to you is, what I would like to see on the ballot is to change council positions to two years and leave mayor two years. If you're going to put something on the ballot. Not to make the mayor four, but to make everybody up here two years. So that you keep saying that my only voice is my vote. I need to vote for my districts every two years. So that's what I would put on the ballot. I don't want my mayor for four years. I personally don't want my council member for four years. Because obviously, Mr. Begonia does, he still hasn't talked to me, who's my representative. I would like to see if you're going to put anything on the ballot to make council members for two years and the mayor to stay two years. So that we can voice our opinion.
Okay, so these are the ones that we have on here for right now. We'll have to address these right here.
Well, you're going to pass it. It's going to be four to one.
But it... Anybody else?
All right, hi. Again, my question would be, I'm, I'm kind of interested just from a historical perspective, so I'm guessing everybody that, you know, graduated from Los Manos High School knows this answer. I don't know. But what I'm trying to understand is, how did we get to this two-year one in the first place? Is, was there some kind of strategic reason to kind of like offset something so that way you kind of had at least some, what would you call it? Some tribal knowledge within the council? Or was it just, was it just a random act? That's all. And, and I, and I totally get, because I read all this stuff before I came up here. I totally get that we're voting for it, okay? So I, I get that. And I don't, it's, it's not, I, the vote's not going to be three to one. It's going to be three to one, not four to one. But anyway, thank you.
All right. I see nobody else. Mr. Jones?
You know, I'll give you guys kind of like my personal experience from, from being up here from when I was elected in 2008. It was new, I was green, didn't really know much about government. I got involved because, well, I was kind of frustrated with what I was seeing or the lack of what I was seeing, not a lot of progress. It was just really strange on how slow government seemed to operate when I first got on. I latched on to Deborah Lewis. We had a really good friendship and it's a friendship that I, I, I absolutely miss having. And we were really close and we shared a lot of great ideas and a lot of, you know, a lot of good direction that we wanted for the city. One of the things that was a little scary to me, nothing against Ms. Lewis, was at the time we had a mayor and he was giving me some pointers on how to get reelected. And this is just an analogy, it's not the, the exact scenario that he shared with me. But it was pretty much goes along the lines of, he had his constituent called, and this is the analogy, had a cat stuck in a tree. And he personally overseed getting this cat out of the tree by reaching out to the fire department, seeing that the fire department got it, and following back up with that constituent. And he did that so he would get the vote guaranteed from that person because they personally, he personally took care of their, their item. One of the jobs that I've learned for council is we're, we're procedure-based, we're, we're policy-based. And so we need to focus on improving our policies, improving our procedures and ordinances. We have staff and we have some really great staff that work tirelessly to provide these services for the community. And I just feel like a two-year term, you're barely understanding on how the government operates. So if you're changing out council and a mayor every two years, you'll never get anything done. You'll be spinning your wheels as you're going uphill. You really need somebody that can get in, start understanding what the issues are, why things are not just happening overnight, like prime example, an animal shelter. We would love to get that in tomorrow. It's just we've got a lack of manpower without deterring too much off of what I think is holding certain projects up. It's just you really need a, a council with a strong direction and a consistent direction that can just push forward projects. They don't have to be the ideal project or we don't have to pick out the color of the drapes or the color of the carpet or the paint on the walls. That's staff's job. We just need to help support and provide good policies and procedures for them to do their job. And so that's why I'm in favor of a four-year term. So we can actually have a mayor that's focused on doing the job instead of politicking every two years. It's just, that was one of the most frustrating things that I've seen as a council member. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Just briefly clarify, it, it would not be possible under the government code to have two-year terms for the council members as an option. Terms for the council members are four years only.
Boy, correct. All right. I will now put out there, take a motion, consider a motion. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve City Council Resolution Number 6711. To let the people vote.
Okay, your second?
Second.
All right, now I'll call for a roll call vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
We have three yes and one no. We're to approve the measure changing the term, to consider the proposed measure changing the term of office of mayor for two years to four years to the California Government Code 3490 to be placed on the ballot. Now we'll wait till Mr. Mayor gets back to move on to the next item. All right, let's move on to item 11. Consideration of the Cancellation of the Regular City Council Meeting Scheduled for Wednesday, December 20th, due to the holiday season. Do I have a motion or discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Uh, so move to, or are we just discussing or we're doing a motion right now? Just motion? All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, council on December 20th, um, council meeting.
All right, Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item 12, advisement of public notices. I understand no report. Moving on to item 13, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. First off, I just want to give a big congratulations to the finance department for nine years of their work. So we can just give another hand clap, really appreciate them and all their hard work. On that, nine years of a lot of hard work. So thank you for that, finance team, for those that are here and those that aren't. Thank you so much, really appreciate that. Also, really like to give a big congratulations to our new parks and rec director and a, a big shout to him for all his hard work, Joe Heim. Thank you so much, Joe, for all the hard work that you do for us here in the city. And to really appreciate your comments of how well his booklet is and well put together. It's, they do a very good job and a lot of hard work on that. So really appreciate that feedback on that. Yeah, so thank you so much for that. Also like to mention to the folks, we had our police station ribbon cutting and we had our swearing-in for our new police chief, once again, Chief Ray Reyna. Big hand clap to him for that. Very well-attended event. Thank you to folks in the public for coming on out, supporting that event and all the hard work that got put into that. So appreciate that. Want to mention to folks that we have the Breakfast for Santa. Tickets are on sale, pre-sale, ten dollars. And at the door, fourteen dollars, so you can save four dollars if you get your pre-sale ticket. That is on December 9th. So want to make folks known about that. December 2nd, as was mentioned, is we have our Christmas Day Parade. So if you folks come on out, hopefully we get some sunshine there for us. That'd be a really good event for us at the city and it's very well-attended and it's always a nice thing for us here. In other words, congratulations to all the soccer teams that participated in this year's soccer, all the teams that won and all, everybody that participated. Thanks for coming on out. There's always a, a big event for us. And every Saturday you can see it, Oliver Park, a lot of people out there. So that's really exciting to see that. If you get a chance to drive by the community center, we have a new digital signboard that's being put up right now at the community center. So I'm really excited about that. If you had a chance to drive around, just within the last couple of weeks since this last coun- council meeting, we've cut trees on Washington Street, Adams Street, Jefferson Street, Madison Street, Seventh Street, Sixth Street, Fourth Street. So them folks are out there, been doing a whole lot of work and cutting the trees out there. If you notice, we got some nice Christmas decorations in front of City Hall. Really excited about that. Some nice Christmas decorations out in front of the plazas are getting done. We partnered with the Downtown Association on decorating downtown with the trees and the lights and coordination of music. So we're really excited about that and looking forward to the nice festive, uh, atmosphere that we have going on. We got some new playgrounds that we got put together at Gardens One. If you have a chance, go take a look at that. It's a really neat little playground in Gardens One Park. To be more specific, is on I Street. It's kind of the park by San Luis Plaza. So really nice playground we got going over there. We got a new playground that's getting ready to come in here at the College Greens Park. So really excited about that. Just on the park side of things and the playgrounds, it's just been great. The team's just been moving. Normally we do about two parks a year, if I'm not mistaken. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe Heim. This year we're projected to do about eight parks and eight new playground sets. Is that correct? So we're really excited about that. So the team is really working hard and getting things done. So that's really great. And then also we have the tree lighting ceremony. It's going to be the night of the Christmas parade. So the Christmas parade is December 2nd and we will have the tree lighting ceremony that day. So just a big thank you to all the staff. They've been working hard to get projects done, make things happen, work hard for the citizens of this town. So appreciate it, folks.
All right, move on to item four, report update. Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Pennsyl Clean Energy, PCE, Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and Los Manos Downtown Property and Business. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis first, if you have anything.
No report tonight, I gave my report last week.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we have, uh, MCAG meeting and PCE meeting are both scheduled for tomorrow. So I won't have anything for that for the time being. Do you have anything for downtown?
Yeah, we have the Winter Lighting Celebration, November 30th, 6 to 9 p.m. There'll be food vendors, arts crafts, choir, fifty-fifty raffle and window contests. So it's our annual lighting of the downtown. Last year was amazing, I'm expecting even bigger this year. So please come out to that. Starts November, well, it's November 30th, 6 to 9 p.m.
All right. All right, we'll move on to item 15, city council, council member reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Joe on your appointment to your position. You've been doing an outstanding job since you've been here. There have been many comments on the booklet that you put out each year, which includes, imagineably, everything that happens in parks and recreation. So thank you for your continued dedication in doing the job. I'd also like to congratulate our new chief of police, Chief Ray Reyna. You've been on the force working for a long time. He has been primed for this position. I think we should have appointed you the minute you put in your application. But nonetheless, he is our new chief and I'm very thankful for his appointment to that position. And with that, I, I also want to thank our former chief of police, Gary Breezy, for all the years of dedicated service he's given to our city. He was, along with his staff members and his commanders, worked diligently to get the police department going. It, it took several years to get it going. There was property that we had to purchase. There was abatement of the soil, contamination. There was just so many things that had to be done. But he got it done and I'm very thankful for his leadership to our department and to our officers in the city of Los Manos. I do have a couple of questions for our city attorney. There ha- there have been, there has been a, a citizen that's come to our podium on several occasions about the scoring system for the ARPA funds. And there was mention made that some people had put in public record requests for that. I don't know if that's the case or not. I'm just, you know, kind of reiterating what, what that person said. But would there be any reason why, under the Public Records Act, that they could not get that information?
So we're really not supposed to have a back and forth during this part of the agenda, but I will tell you, we have responded to significant and numerous Public Records Act requests appropriately and given all of the information that we have that has been requested. But as you, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and I, I prefaced it by saying, I don't know.
So we've probably had, I'm thinking, a minimum of four exhaustive question, Public Records Act requests on ARPA. That's siphoned a lot of staff time to pull a lot of records, but it just doesn't seem to be ever enough. And it doesn't seem to be interpreted the way it should be interpreted when the records are...
And it doesn't seem to be interpreted the way it should be interpreted when the records are given. So we've, 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 uh, we have responded to all those requests.
Okay. And the other request I'd like to make, um, of, to have a report, uh, Mr. Mayor at our next meeting, is where we are, uh, in regards to the grant application that we put in for the, uh, uh, home key to purchase the hotel. Um, I, I'd like to have an update from staff as to where we are in that process.
I can work with you on that.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lambert?
Uh, tonight there's nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Um, I'd just like to congratulate Joe. Um, not only is your pamphlet awesome, but every event you put on is awesome too, so congratulations on your position. Um, the ceremony for the police, new police station and Chief Ray Reyna, absolutely awesome. Amazing turnout by the public. Um, and I'll go say for the veterans' parade, amazing as well. And, uh, the best part about that is just always seeing people from the community that, uh, familiar faces, some I see often, some I haven't seen in decades. And, uh, it's great to see all the people coming out to these events and participate in our community.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, yes, I, I do want to thank Joe, uh, Heim and his, uh, promotion. Truth be told, I thought he was already the permanent, uh, Parks and Rec Director. Uh, he, he definitely, uh, performs like it, so congratulations. Um, the new police station, it's a beautiful building and, uh, I know the police officers and staff, uh, they worked hard in planning every inch of that. So, uh, good job, guys, it's, it's, it's amazing. And then I want to thank the VFW and American Legion for inviting council out again this year to participate on the veterans' parade. It was a, a great turnout and a beautiful day and it was nice to see the C-one-thirty flyover, is that correct? Yeah, so that's always a sight to see. So thank you, and that is all.
All right, uh, stuck with me at the end. So I just want to thank everybody that came to the ribbon-cutting of the police department, um, and Chief Ray Reyna swearing. Uh, that was a great turnout, so thank you for everybody who came out to that. Um, Joe, again, I'm still a little upset that it took me so long to get out of your Halloween maze, but it's okay, I'll get over it. Um, congrats, again, very well deserved, you've been doing an amazing job. Um, and again, the public is beginning to look forward to these events and gather to them, and so I really appreciate everything you're doing. Um, just some comments that were made, um, in the early public forum, um, because again, I'm a hundred percent listening to what you're saying. Now, with that being said, I'm not the type of person that's going to tell you what you want to hear. And I don't think anybody elected me to just tell you what you want to hear, and I'm going to tell you the truth. So I'm going to start with the issues with the homeless. Um, I'm actually a little, uh, hopefully, uh, I'm kind of enthused because somehow the city of San Francisco found a way to clean up a large portion of their homeless. Um, it might be temporary, I don't know, but that kind of, you know, again, energizes me that hopefully we could do something of the same, same way. And I know there's, you know, state and federal laws with that, and so, um, I'm looking forward to trying to doing my homework to see what, what that's about. Um, also too, understand that this isn't the only place there's homeless. That's just a fact. So, and, and again, I, I totally feel for the people that you have to look out your window, I get it, I understand it. And it's not that I'm turning a blind eye, if there's a way I can fix it tomorrow, I fix it tonight, okay? But the reality is, I don't make state laws, okay? I didn't pass Proposition forty-seven. I didn't make it to where people don't stay in jail. Um, and coming from somebody in law enforcement, again, it's extremely frustrating for me. So again, if I could fix it tonight, trust me, I want to go home to my kids, I'd go fix it. Um, and so again, that's just, that's just reality of it, okay? Um, when people come and make public comments, this is exactly why people like veterans fought for us. You can come here and you can tell us anything you want, put it right here on the chin, I'll take it. That, that's what I signed up for and that's okay. You can disagree with policies, that's what we're here for, that's okay, right? Um, and I took some great notes because some of you, again, are bringing things forward. But if you bring false information to this podium or you attack my staff, I will one hundred percent defend them and by any means necessary. So if you make fraudulent claims or you claim things like misappropriation or preferential treatment, you'd better have done your homework because I will do whatever it takes to protect my staff. And then, and that's what I'm in this position for. Last but not least, Thanksgiving. Um, I really hope everybody has an amazing Thanksgiving. Um, I have a lot to be thankful for, um, trying not to get a little emotional. We had a family from Pacheco High School that had a huge loss this year. And, and my heart goes out to them, it really does. And so, again, go home, hug your families, hug your kids, hug your grandkids, so just be thankful. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned at eight-thirty.